Now I need to find my gavel. The time is now 6:30 PM on the evening of February 4th, 2021, and I declare this meeting of the Covington Planning Commission open. And we do a roll call, please. The Chair is here. Is Murray Williams present?
I am here.
Is Mr. David Cottle present?
He is definitely here.
Is Jennifer Gilbert Smith present?
I'm here.
And Joe Columber?
Yes, I am.
And finally, least and probably, you know, not the least prettiest, because that would be me, Ms. Kathy Foschord.
Yes, I am here. Thank you. You're sweet.
It appears that everyone is here. Please mute yourselves and virtually stand and recite silently with me the proceedings. May I have a flag, please, Mr. Herriman? Thank you all. Do we have any action regarding the agenda to be taken? Does anyone wish to make a motion to approve the agenda?
I move we accept the agenda as published.
I'll second that.
Does anyone have any comments about the agenda before we take call for a vote? Please indicate by showing your hand within your camera if you can, and saying aye if you approve of the, if you are in favor of the motion.
Aye.
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 Thank you. Do we have any motion regarding the consent agenda, which consists only of the minutes from January 7th?
I'll move that we approve the consent agenda, including the last 8 minutes.
I'll second that.
Excellent. Any comments on the motion before we vote? Please indicate by raising your hand and saying aye if you approve of the motion. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, everyone. The citizen comment period is now open. This is an opportunity for members of the audience to address the commission on items either not on the agenda or not listed as a public hearing. If you wish to speak, please raise your hand in the Zoom meeting and Ryan will promote you to a speaker and you can talk to yourself. You'll have about four minutes to get your point out there. If your interest is in agenda item, we will ask you to hold your comments until we wait till that time. Citizen comments are directed to the Planning Commission, not to the audience or the city staff. Comments are not intended for conversation or debate. If you require more than the allotted four minutes, please contact us, contact Ryan or Jenna and let them know when they can place your topic on the agenda for an upcoming meeting. Let's see. That's it. Do we have anyone wishing to speak, Ryan?
No one has raised their hands yet, Mr. Chairman. Oh, we have one person who has raised their hand.
Hi, Sam.
Aye. I don't know if they can see me now or not. I can't see me, but I won't take but just a second. I just wanted to let you know that the Realtors have been following the work the city's been doing on the Housing Action Plan, the Form-Based Code, and we're really excited to see what you're working on and what you're coming up with. We were involved in the major up zones in 2009, and we've been following what the other jurisdictions are doing as well. In Renton, Ken, I have principal responsibility for South King County, and so we've been watching those. So far as I know, Covington is the only jurisdiction that has been ambitious enough to try to take on something as substantial as the Form-Based Code. And I think you're really wise and sage to focus those efforts on a specific area like the downtown. And so we'll try to be involved in this and provide whatever assistance or support we can as you're going forward. But we're really excited and appreciative, excited about and appreciative of the work that you guys are doing on this. And we look forward to hearing tonight's presentation, watching how this unfolds, and I know that you don't, I used to be an attorney for a planning commission in another state, and so I know from my prior experience that you guys don't hear this very often. But thank you, thank you, thank you for your public service. This is not real sexy stuff, but it is really important to the future quality of life and the economic opportunities and really the future of the City of Covington. So that's all I've got. Thanks very much, and I'll lower my hand and look forward to listening.
Thanks, Sam. Anyone else, Ryan?
No, that's everyone.
Okay. Thank you, everyone. The public comment period is now closed. Our new business is the Form-Based Code Draft Overview, which I will turn it over to Ryan, who I believe will turn it over to Scott. I do remind everybody that please mute yourself when you're not actively speaking.
Yeah, that would be great. Please mute yourself, because we're getting a lot of feedback. Fantastic. Well, this evening, we're going to have a presentation on the first draft of the proposed Form-Based Code. They're going to be, we're going to be sharing what has happened since our virtual open house that we had in September and how our consultants, makers, has moved forward with the draft since that meeting. This meeting is to, intended to provide some initial information on the organization of the code and highlights of what is remaining the same, but has been moved to a new location and where makers was proposing new language and concepts. This meeting is not intended to go through the weeds of code writing. This is more concept oriented. Additionally, this is not a public hearing. That will follow here in a few months, but right now, staff is continuing to review these provisions. We wanted to share where we were at at this point to get the public and the planning commissioners' initial impressions. After the consultants' presentations, planning commissioners are welcome to provide feedback or initial impressions, ask clarifying questions, or share any areas they would like more information on. Depending on the time, the consultants may be able to respond or look further into it for future draft revisions. I'd like to reiterate that this is not a public hearing and the PC will not be deliberating or voting on anything this evening. And after the planning commissioners have had an opportunity to speak, we will move to the final public comment period of the meeting, and the public will be able to ask questions. I think that there's going to be a little change in that, and when Scott and Bob take over the meeting, I'm sure they'll go through that, but at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Anne for some comments.
I reorganized my screen. Sorry. This is Anne Mule. I'm a planner with the City of Covington, and thank you for joining us this evening. Some of you may have joined us back in September, seems like a long time ago, where we held our first virtual open house and asked for some initial citizen input and from our commissions. And this is our next meeting to show you sort of what we've been doing in the meantime, to show you the initial draft. I want to remind you, we are still looking at it and refining it, but we would like to get initial impression and share that with you. I also, just to reiterate, we are doing this because we did receive a grant from the Washington State Department of Commerce to improve our codes and to ensure that we can get some high-quality design in our downtown that's consistent with the ongoing vision for the downtown and make sure that we promote development of a range of housing types and choices in the downtown as part of a vibrant pedestrian-oriented mixed-use development area. We hired our consultant team, Makers, who is the lead, along with DEA and Burke, and Makers will be providing the, tonight's presentation to go over the highlights of this draft. We are recording this webinar. Sorry, this is a webinar, but we'll be recording this and we will be sharing it on the project webpage. They will show you a slide that has the actual project webpage, but I encourage you to look at that, to look at the history and what we've done to date. There's also an opportunity for you to sign up for email lists that we can send out a heads-up of future drafts and comment opportunities. So please do that. The other item I wanted to talk about was just, and Brian started to touch on this, but we will be having a SEPA analysis of this, and there will be a future community meeting that we will be holding most likely in March, and that will be during a 30-day comment period that will be part of a draft environmental impact statement. So that will be some things that will be showing up on our webpage soon, as well as the future public hearings before the Planning Commission and city councils, before a final determination is made on this. So please check in on that page, but I'm going to let Makers have this now, and they can do some of the housekeeping and explain how you can provide comments during their presentation and afterwards. Thank you. There you go, Bob.
Hey, thank you, Anne and Ryan, and thanks, Mr. Pace, for his kind introduction comments. Working with me here is Scott Bonjukian, urban designer and associate for Makers. In fact, Scott, are you sharing your screen or am I?
If you haven't made any last-minute updates, I can go ahead and do that.
That's okay. I could keep talking while you're doing that. So a lot of work has gone into this. We kicked off, I believe, in January or February, but staff and Scott and I, as well as the rest of our consultant team, put a lot of work into this, as Mr. Pace sort of mentioned there. I think we're getting the slideshow going up here. We can go ahead and switch over to the next slide, too. So this has some of that housekeeping information, including the project website right there, where you can provide comments, Scott and's email address. And again, the meeting's being recorded, of course, and there's a lot, there's great information. Staff's done a great job with the website, keeping up to date with the purpose and outreach materials. And there's an opportunity for questions here in this meeting, too. You can use the Q&amp;A button at any time, and we'll be able to, the team here will be able to see those questions and we can respond to those at appropriate times. So let's switch to the next slide. So I think you've heard a little bit of an overview already to this, and so this is looking at the regulations that control the use and the design of downtown buildings, streets, and public spaces. And the last bullet there, Anne had already mentioned that this, the city's leveraging a grant received from the State Department of Commerce, and let's go to the next slide. So we wanted to really say, well, why are we doing this anyways? So since the 2010 update to the, for the plan and the development standards, there's been some concerns over some of the quality of the new development that's happened, and also downtown's growing a lot more than expected, as staff had added here. It's grown by 69% over the past 10 years, and further, a significant amount of development's happening now and anticipated after city and utility providers have made some of their strategic infrastructure investments. And then the other part is just some modernization of the code is needed to really jive with the regional real estate market, as well as retail and construction trends. Retail trends being particularly pronounced with the pandemic, of course, but and also some of the best code development practices for usability and design. Next slide. So the other part is really making the code easier to use and administer, so easier for people to read, easier for applicants to follow, and easier for the city to administer. Making it, really, a goal is to make it predictable, but integrating strategic flexibility, and I'll get into a little bit more of that part of it later. And then we've made strategic adjustments on a number of the zoning and design issues that I'll be getting into. Next slide. So the outcome is a new code that supports downtown as a pedestrian-friendly business district and function more as a town center. So it also, as part of this effort, is to exempt certain types of development from environmental review to help speed up the applicant's process of getting their permits and developing. And of course, part of this is looking at recommendations for infrastructure expansion to support the growth of downtown. Next slide. We'll just skip to the next slide here on schedule. So again, we started at the beginning of 2020, and we actually, we did stakeholder interviews. In fact, I recognize, we, Scott and I talked to some of the planning commission members here a long time ago at the outset here to discuss some of the issues, opportunities, and concerns regarding downtown. And then we held, I believe it was in September here, you see, we held a virtual open house, and I believe we had more than 100 people attend that. It was, that was, staff did a great job of getting the word out, and since then, we've been really busy at putting this draft together. And so you can see that the goal here is for another public meeting in mid-March and adoption plan for late spring, hopefully June. At the bottom of the schedule there, just illustrates some of the environmental analysis aspect of the project, and so we've noted here, March being the issue date for the draft environmental impact statement, and Anne, I believe, mentioned the comment period to follow after that, and a final projected for April and May, or April or May. Next slide. So code updates, I think this is where Scott takes over a few slides here.
Yeah. So in your packet, Commissioner, to have the first full draft of the code, and just wanted to orient you to a little bit of how it works, how to read it. On the title page, you'll see this blurb, which talks about how we're tracking changes. So we're using the track changes feature with underlines and strike-throughs to compare old code and how that's changing. And if a section is marked new in brackets, that means that it's an entirely new section, so that's a, you'll have a little bit, you might have an easier time of reading those areas. But if it's an old section in brackets, you'll also see the reference of the existing code section. Throughout the code document, you'll see a number of these orange text boxes. Those are intended to be explanatory to why something's changed or alternatives that we considered, and just to bring a little bit more of an explanation of how things are going. So on the right here is a couple of examples of format of the code and how you'll see as you go through it. So we're still using chapter 1831, which is where the downtown standards are currently, but we're totally reorganizing it. We're breaking it into six articles or otherwise known as subchapters, just for the purposes of organization and grouping things together and trying to make it a little bit easier to navigate, because there's a lot here. And underneath each article is where you'll find your traditional section numbers. So Article 1, Section 1 will be a chapter, or excuse me, it'll be something like Section 1831.010. So that's the format that you'll see. So Article 1 regarding a lot of general provisions, purpose and applicability of the code, that's mostly existing. We have made some updates there. You'll see those. Our presentation tonight is focused on Articles 2 through 6, since that's where the more substantial changes are. Article 2 zoning and street types are mostly existing code with some enhancements to make it more easier to use and to integrate some modern Form-Based Code concepts. Then Articles 4, 5, and 6 are the design standards at various scales, block frontages, looking at the pedestrian environment mostly, and the design of buildings on key streets. Site planning will look at the configuration of sites and landscaping, parking, things like that. Then building design, zero then on the actual architectural aspects of developments. So there's a combination of new and old things in here, and we'll try to point out where things have changed based on the current standards. Article 2 covers zoning. This map should look familiar. This is the map of downtown and the four zones that currently govern what can be built here. The zones allow for a variety of uses and building heights and building sizes. We wanted to point out something from our last workshop in September. You might remember, we proposed the concept looking at rezoning the two subdivisions that are zoned MHO or mixed housing office. After further review of that concept and public feedback, we set out to move forward with those. We think these areas might continue to be good locations for infill and missing middle housing, things like townhouses and cottage housing, duplexes, things like that. Overall, on the permitted land use table, we've made very few changes to that. We thought it mostly looked good in terms of what the city envisioned for the area and a little bit of comparison to some peer cities. The thing to notice when you're reading the draft here is that we have added a definition for every land use to help provide some clarity to applicants and staff on what's allowed and what's not. We have removed the NP symbol, which used to mean not permitted, and instead you'll just see a blank cell. So that makes it a little bit easier to skim and get a sense of the permitted land use at a glance. And the big new thing is on the right column, you'll see a title called Additional Provisions. This replaces the meta-footnotes that used to be below the permitted land use table. It provides some, if there's a special condition for use that can fit here, we put it here. Otherwise, this column will cross-reference to somewhere else in the code that provides those supplemental use standards. So the intent there is just to tighten things up a little bit and make it a little more organized. And Bob, I believe, is going to talk about changes to building height and the bonus incentive systems.
Thank you, Scott. So currently, you have a bonus, a density, or a, it's called a floor-area ratio bonus. So in floor-area ratio refers to generally the massing of your buildings with respect to the size of the site, and what we propose to do is simplify that and make it based on height. And also, it's given us a chance to fine-tune it. We had, we had examined it, and then there are a number of features here, which I'll go through in the next slide that we'll look at editing, but we think this will be easier to administer and understand. There, you can see the graphic. At least in the town center zone, the old maximum height is 75 feet. What we're doing is we're actually lowering the max base height to 55, but then you could actually go 10 feet higher, up to 85 feet with bonuses. But you no longer have to worry about your massing and floor-area ratio issues. So this applies, this bonus setup applies to the town center, the MC and the GC zones. And there's a note there just saying that, as you know, there's no seven-story buildings right now in downtown, and you you kind of see that the new development is, I believe, topping out at about five floors there, so it would still fall within the maximum base height under the new code. Let's go to the next slide, and here we'll get into, you had a very broad list of bonus opportunities, and this is pretty common, at least 10 years ago, when cities started doing this. We find it actually more useful to have a more focused list, because people are always going to do the easiest one, that's least expensive, and largely the stuff they're going to do anyways. And some of that is some of these underground or above-ground parking, for instance. At those densities and heights, they're going to have to do that anyways. So we're taking those out, because that's, they're going to do it anyways, and we're addressing that in other means. The other one that we're taking out is affordable housing, because right now, actually, most of the new development that's gone in is affordable, and I think there's a desire to really mix up the different levels of housing in downtown. So compared to the region, it's already very affordable. And then there's a couple other things, through block connections and pathways. Those things are actually going to be required in certain cases downtown. The other features we thought were good, so public space, plazas, large and small, environmental certification, and then these water feature, art element. The notes or standards there, a lot of those we think are pretty good, so we decided to keep them. And we think that those provisions make them pretty kind of equal footing, but we've done some strategic updates to clarify some things there. Let's go to the next slide. There's some other dimensional standard changes that we've made. So again, I've mentioned, we got rid of the floor-area ratio standards, so there's no need to worry about that anymore. We've made some adjustments to the setbacks, front, side, and rear, to be, particularly the front, to be a little more flexible and dependent on the specific locations. The other thing we did, we've done is remove impervious area standards, and we've replaced this with the more dynamic landscaped area standards. And I'll get into the density provisions in another slide. Let's go to the next one, Scott. So this landscape area minimum standard is kind of similar to something that we helped adopt in downtown Mercer Island. And really, it's almost, it's very similar to impervious area, but it recognizes different planning beds. So if you have a planning bed that's really deep and offers opportunities for large trees, you get sort of extra credit for that. Likewise, you get credit for green walls and green roofs, and the credit you get depends on the quality. You know, whether it's, if it's, if it's the green wall on the right that simply has ivy, you know, you get a small amount of credit. But if you do something pretty intense, like the green wall on the left, you get a little bit more credit. So we think that that could work and help green up downtown a little bit. Next slide. And then density here. So in all, in most of the zones, you had maximum dwelling unit per acre standards, and we've, since this is a Form-Based Code, we're trying to get away from that, because the densities are going to be controlled by a combination of parking, the building heights, market, just general market development conditions, and other things like usable open space and ground floor requirements. So as a trend, we've been suggesting to sort of do away with those and let the market and all these other standards dictate it. Let's go to the next slide. So streets and circulation, I'll go, I'll continue to go through this. So again, Scott had referred to the survey that we did for the September open house. We had a number of questions here on streets and trails. The one was regarding, and we showed enhancements to the circulation network. We talked about enhancements to 272nd, and also prioritizing the trail development along Jenkins Creek. All of those got high scores. Anything over a 3.0 is more positive than negative, and so these got all generous sort of in the good idea range scores. So the map on the left here illustrates both the kind of the circulation concept for existing and new streets, and the different colors refer to different standards for different streets, refer to different configurations or cross-sections of the street for different lanes and planters and those types of things. We've largely kept the different street types, and I'll get into a little bit of that more. The map on the right, the updated version, and we've just made some strategic changes to both the types and the circulation, and let's go to the next slide. So this just zooms in on some of the different street type maps. We've added more connections in strategic places to make sure we've got good circulation as development occurs in the future. So for instance, you see 273rd in front of the Safeway. Those would be improvements that, that when, if and when that property redevelops, they would have to integrate they would have to integrate these, these streets, public streets, and they would have to meet the, in this case, that magenta color is type two standards. So they would have to meet the cross-section for the lanes, on-street parking, planning strip and sidewalk widths for those. So the other big thing, the big new thing here also are these through block connections. So if you look at the orange dashed lines, what we're trying to really do is we don't necessarily need vehicular connections and, and all those spots. So these are mostly pedestrian connections. So as the development occurs, we really want to create these internal pathways to improve the livability and the connectivity to make it easier to get around and make it more pleasant to get around in downtown. And then the yellow are the trails. And so you can see Jenkins Creek, that's already in the city's plans. And so we're just reinforcing that and providing connections to it. Next slide. So this is an example, kind of a cross-section that we show in the street type standards. In the old provision, it also talked about some building standards, but our, this new setup just focuses on what's between the buildings. And it includes, you know, the sidewalks, the planning strips and, and, and the actual roadway. So we've made some minor adjustments here and there on some of these cross-sections and streets. Really looking at bike situation, parking, turn lanes, and, and we've updated the graphics. Next slide. And then these are some visuals for the through block connections. And so where you have, if you develop on one of those properties that has the through block connection on it, you have a choice of doing one of three different types of through block connections. And one of those would be kind of what we call wood earth or a shared street, which is on the lower left there where it's sort of a, you know, it's a, it's a, it's a narrow route where both pedestrians and cars mix, but it's, it's designed for really slow speeds. And most often curbless design, and you can have these pedestrian areas alongside of it. It could be, you know, in a, in a residential area or a commercial area. Or you have these landscape passageway, which is just a pedestrian only path with landscaping on both sides before you get to the buildings and others, parking and other stuff. And then downtown passageway is more of that urban, narrow passageway pedestrian between buildings. It's that well, looks sort of like those images there. Next slide. Okay. And so articles four, five and six, as Scott had mentioned, get into the design standards. And the first part of that gets into, well, first here, I'll talk about the approach. So what I mentioned before, the, what we try to do with these design standards is get the right balance of predictability and flexibility. So predictability meaning that, you know, we, we understand what the code says and what the minimum requirements are. It's very clear what you have to do. So applicants understand, staff understands and the community understands, but we try to integrate, integrate strategic flexibility because well, that's important to offer that flexibility. But to make sure that that's done strategically and it's clear how it's done. So we do that by having clear minimum standards that are measurable. And also providing sort of a toolbox approach where you have a number of options and you have to do, you know, two or three of them. So you know exactly how you can meet the standards while it gives you flexibility for how to meet it and how to control costs too. And then the other part is we allow these strategic departure opportunities where, and these are voluntary where the applicant can propose to depart from the standards, provided they meet the purpose of the standards in any particular criteria for these departures. And so these are not for everything. They're only, you know, there's probably about 30 or so departure opportunities in the code. So only, we only offer those where specifically noted. So they're very important, but it's a, it's a configuration we found to be very, very useful. But we, and we've strategically integrated these in areas we think should allow some flexibility. Go to the next slide. There's a lot of graphics. So by graphics, photographs, illustrations, and the bad examples can be just as effective, sometimes even more than the good examples. So we try to show a range of examples and how you can meet the code. Next slide. So block frontages is the, is article four. And by block frontages referring to the private, the front of the private development. So the front of the buildings and how the site is development, where that basically where the sidewalk ends and where the private property begins. So a couple of the questions in the survey, the question three there was just to foster development of a pedestrian friendly node north of 272nd. And then we had another one talking about south of 272nd, and both of those received positive scores. Let's go to the next slide. So some of the problems with the current code, the current code had a variation of this. But it, but it required ground floor commercial on all of the frontages in the town center. And that includes a lot of side streets. And so if you've seen the Polaris development back behind Safeway, it, it required ground floor commercial there and it's just not, you know, behind those trees and so isolated. It's, there's certain, what we've tried to do is really be strategic about where you require ground floor commercial. And so that's what the new code does. It's, it looks at things on a block by block basis. So the current standards also, there are a number of design issues that, that they didn't quite address that we are, we want to address here. And and also that the, the downtown's evolved a bit since 2010. So we have a chance to make adjustments here. So again, we're going to be looking at stuff on a block by block basis. Let's go to the next slide. So the map here shows this, this approach and, and what we have is five different block frontage designations, starting with the obvious storefront example. So that need a storefront, the, the red lines on the map illustrate where you have to have a commercial storefront right on the back edge of the sidewalk. That's a requirement. These other ones, well, I'll get into these because we have some other slides here. So let's go to the next slide. So this is the visual of the storefront. We've all seen them, but this kind of, the graphic illustrates some of the key standards. You've got a lot of window transparency. And you can see the, the dimensional standards for that. You've got weather protection in the form of awnings and marquees. And your entry faces the street and also a minimum floor to ceiling height of the interior of those spaces to make sure that they're adaptable to a variety of retail uses. And there's example images of those on the right. Next slide. So we're only showing three different areas that have this storefront designation. One is on the, the former school site down on Wax Road, which I'll get into a little bit more later. The other one would be if and when Safeway redevelops, that connection between right now, the front of the Safeway and 272nd as to try to get storefronts on that. And then also really focusing on the roundabout area up close to the current Kohl's store. So if and when those areas redevelop and some of those frontages along 170, 172nd sort of look like storefronts. So this is really trying to create these little nodes of pedestrian oriented areas as downtown evolves. So it's only if and when redevelopment happens. Next slide. And then let's go to the next one. The next one I'll talk about is landscape frontages. And so that's in the green color on the map. And that's where some landscape setback, like the photos in the graphics show require. There would still be some transparency standards to maintain, maintain in attractive building frontages and visibility on the street. And entries facing the street and weather protections just over the entry. So the, the graphics here show a residential example and a commercial example there. And the next slide shows what we call mixed frontages would be a choice where the applicant or the developer can choose if they want a storefront right at the edge of the sidewalk, they can do that, or they can choose to do the landscape setback. Next slide. So the map here again illustrates, and go back real quick, Scott. The map just illustrates how those break down in certain streets where we thought that the, the landscape approach would be good. And, and a lot of the other core town center streets we show is that purple to allow that flexibility. Next slide. The next slide gets into the 272nd frontage. 272nd, a different situation and requires its own unique approach. And there, what we're trying to do is make sure that the intersections are a little more pedestrian friendly to help with crossing. And, and that's where, you know, cars are slowing down and turning. So the photo and the graphic here illustrate trying to get more of the, the activity in the buildings around the intersections and being a little more flexible between the intersections. So the, the graphic there kind of shows an example of what the vision is. Next slide. And then there's some streets that don't have any color. And this is what we call basic. And they're just more flexible where there's greater flexibility of the frontages and, and where parking can be located. Next slide.
All right.
Here. You want to take it away?
Yep. So that covers article four block frontages. And now we're getting into article five, which deals with site planning and configuration issues. So one of, one of the key focus items in a form based code is the space between buildings and where pedestrians can congregate and eat outside and gather. And public space provided by private development is a, is a key part of that. Building, building a, a good downtown and a place people want to be. So the problem though is the current public space requirements for downtown are fairly vague. Then, and they haven't really resulted in quality and usable space that people want to hang out in. So the, the photo here is, is an example from a recent project. It's, it's got a poor connection to the building where it's just, it's just up against a wall with no entry into the building. There's no active, no active uses going on there. There's no seating or other amenities, minimal landscaping, et cetera. So this prompted us to take a close look at the, at the design standards for public space, which are shown on the upper right, to make some strategic updates to that. So the table provides a comparison of the, the before and after here. The, the key points are that we've refined how much space is required. So previously, you have to size these spaces based on the size of the building and that would be 1.5% of the gross floor area. We're proposing making that 2% of the site area. We're also enhancing the design standards for these spaces, you know, requiring certain materials are acceptable versus not acceptable. Requiring a minimum amount of seating and whatnot. I could also mention, we're also changing how these, where these spaces are required to be built. Right now they're only required to be built in the town center and the mixed commercial zones, and they apply to all developments, including residential apartment buildings. We're proposing to expand this to all downtown zones. And it would apply to all mixed use and commercial development in the town center. And in the other zones, it would apply to those kinds of developments that are over 10,000 square feet. So it's, since those areas might be a little bit less pedestrian focused. So we have a number of graphics and images in the code draft to help support the standards and explain the kind of spaces that we're after here. Again, we're focused on location relative to building entries and windows and the quality of materials and dimensions, and also providing enough seating for people to have some flexibility how the spaces are used. Related to that, we had a question at the September workshop about open space for residential and we had a general question about enhancing the quality of space. And as you can see, the scores are well above 3.0. So people were supportive of that concept. So we dove into that. So a similar chart here, the current standards for multifamily require 100 square feet of open space per units. We've suggested updating those a little bit to studio and one bedroom apartments or dwellings need to provide 100 square feet per unit. And then if you have two or more bedrooms, that would be 150 square feet per unit. And that's cumulative. So that, that square footage, it doesn't get tacked on to that unit specifically. It can be distributed around the building. And also note that those numbers are instead, although we've had, we've, those were developed based on a lot of research from other communities around the region and some built examples. We are still talking with staff about maybe adjusting those. One option, for example, would be combining them to 125 square feet per unit to make things more simple. We've expanded the types of amenities that can count as amenity space. The, the previous code doesn't specifically mention balconies, ground, ground level yard space and children's play areas has also come up as a, as a, as a key issue. So again, these standards right now don't have very much in the way of design guidance. So the emphasis here is that we've expanded the types of spaces again that may qualify. And we've also added minimum dimensions to make sure these spaces are usable. So for example, if you're a ground level courtyard, you have to be, I believe it's a minimum of 15 feet wide at all points to make sure the space is open. If you have, if you want to do a balcony and you want to qualify that as open space, the balcony has to be a certain size at least, and so on and so forth. But the goal here basically, making sure that multifamily developments in a dense urban setting is, provides some usable recreation and social space for residents. So tipping down to parking, this gets down into article five. And article five has a lot of content in it. It's, it's almost kind of a grab bag, but we're, we're focusing on the key things here. We've not made major changes to the minimum parking requirements. Currently downtown has maximum parking requirements, which are basically 50% above the minimum. And we've made some strategic adjustments to the maximums. We've also expanded and clarified the options for developers to provide more or less parking than the standards. Generally getting permission for those adjustments required during a parking study and doing some other, providing some other features to help promote alternative transportation options. We started updating the electric vehicle standards, but that's a rapidly evolving space and we have a little bit more research to do there. So, but we think we have a good starting point in the first draft code here. And we've also completely overhauled the bike parking standards. They were, they're, the bike parking standards were previously based on the amount of parking you provide. Now we're decoupling that and making it based on the land use. So it's a little bit more specific and nuanced. And bike parking will also have some additional requirements to ensure good design and, and security of bike parking. So the last slide on parking was about quantity. This slide is about quality. We drafted a number of design standards that expand on the current code to ensure parking is well-integrated with developments. For example, we're requiring that parking be accessed from side streets or alleyways where those options exist. And parking shouldn't be located off of storefronts or landscape block frontages where more pedestrian activity is likely and good design is going to be more emphasized. And we're also expanding and enhancing the requirements that surface parking lots where they do get built, they be screened with good landscaping. We also have a major new section of the code that covers structured parking, since downtown is likely to see a lot more structured parking in the future. Preferably parking in, in parking garages is hidden or underneath or behind buildings. And we have a lot of code data in that, in the code on how to do that. Building design, we asked a couple of questions at the September workshop about improving building design standards related to massing and external materials. And we got positive support on those fronts. Well, building math thing is a key issue and it's of interest to downtown because the downtown area has some pretty big parcels and large properties. And we're probably going to see more large buildings in the future. Even with the, the required breaking up of blocks with new streets and pedestrian connections. The current standards are a little shy on how to address building massing. So we've overhauled that with new standards for articulation. Articulation basically means that buildings have to have some kind of pattern of components. Uh, articulation basically means that buildings have to have some kind of pattern of components or pieces that occur every so often. Uh, and that pattern has to be broken up every 60 feet for commercial buildings and usually about every 30 feet for residential buildings. Um, and those patterns can be, uh, designed in a variety of ways. Uh, we, we give architects a lot of flexibility there. Um, it can be changes in the wall direction. It could be the youth columns and peers. It can be changes in, uh, window patterns and orientation, uh, changes in the roof line, um, and materials, colors, um, and anything like that. Uh, very long buildings, which we define as over 120 feet long, will have to incorporate even bigger changes, um, to help add visual interest, uh, to the protective environment at the street level. And it's an example of a, a longer building, uh, with a prominent element that helps break up the facade and the smaller parts, just as a, uh, an instance of what we're talking about. We're building details. Uh, we've greatly expanded upon the current, uh, downtown standards here. On the left side are examples of, uh, options for details that would be incorporated into commercial buildings and storefronts at the ground level. Uh, so things like decorative windows and shades, uh, unique doorways, uh, unique materials and, um, uh, window design and whatnot. Uh, on the right side are, is an emphasis that, uh, all new buildings are, uh, commercial and residential will be required to, um, do a little bit more, uh, with their window treatments. So, um, buildings will require to either, uh, trim the bill, trim their windows or set back the glass of the window from the wall a little bit. And the purpose of that is to add a little bit of depth and, and shade and shadow to the exterior of the building. Uh, what we're really trying to do here with windows is avoid, uh, option F in the, the lower right corner where you just have a, a flat plane of glass against the building, which, um, is not usually, in most cases, it's not, uh, very appealing. So not only is the shape of the building important, uh, as we've talked about, but also the materials that are used on the outside. The current downtown standards don't really address materials very specifically. So we saw that as an opportunity, uh, to dive into that. Um, this, this code section under Article Six now, um, explains that if you do use certain materials, um, you're not required to use any particular material. But if you, if you opt for these, um, you have to meet certain sta- standards to ensure that they're well integrated with the building. Uh, for example, on the left, uh, image is concrete block and on the right is metal siding. Um, these are pretty common because they're relatively low cost and, uh, they can work well if they incorporate, uh, you know, a little bit of, uh, extra thought into color, texture. And, uh, we've also put a hard limit on how much surface area that they can cover. Um, similarly cement board and EPHIS or synthetic stucco material, uh, are also low cost materials that are pretty common. Uh, and when done well, um, they can do, uh, they can complement, uh, a facade fairly well. So our standards emphasize again, you know, mixing, mixing things up, uh, changing color, uh, and whatnot. Well, lastly on the design standard that we want to highlight tonight's, uh, are blank walls. Uh, we define blank walls as large expanses of wall space on the outside of a building that doesn't have any doors or windows. Uh, and that, and the reason we're concerned about that is blank walls don't really make a good impression on the pedestrian environments. And, uh, they, they really make the building, uh, a little bit bland. So, uh, we're not prohibiting them, but if they are in place, uh, we're requiring blank walls to be treated with, uh, any number of options such as, um, display windows, uh, displaying retail merchandise, for example, um, treatments of landscaping, art installations, a little bit more detail on material patterns, um, or other methods, uh, as the code allows. So that ends, uh, the design standard section here. And, um, I'll just mention, we, we skipped over a lot of detail, um, and, and nuance in our presentation. So we encourage everyone to, to take a look at the draft document itself and dive in and, and, uh, we will look forward to your comments and everything. So, uh, getting towards the end here, Bob will provide a quick updates on the, uh, town center planning, uh, efforts.
Thank you, Scott. Yep, just a couple more slides. I wanted to, to say a few things about the town center. It's such a great opportunity that you have. And, uh, Ann's told us that these buildings may be gone right now, uh, on the ground or not on the ground anymore. But in any case, uh, you know, your timing, I know that you had planned to, um, the, the, the downtown plan done over 10 years ago had really good sketches and, and vision for it. Um, and, and I do think that, that, uh, even though it's sort of right now on the backside of your downtown, I, I, we still think it's, it's a really good site, uh, for being the pedestrian center and functioning as a town center. And I think because now some time's gone by, there's some really good, similar developments in other communities that, uh, you, we can learn from. Uh, and, and that developers, there's been public, private partnerships. So there's a lot of good stuff that's happened. And so maybe because of that, the ultimate development that you get there is going to be better, uh, for it. So let's go to the next slide. Uh, and we had some survey questions about this and they were, again, all, uh, they particularly liked the, the idea of doing it. And then we showed two different options, which I'll go through in a minute. And they both were received positively. Next slide. So what we've done is those block frontage standards and maps that we've show, we show a concept. Um, so the diagonal, the big diagonal road there is Wax Road, uh, north is up. And, um, what we show is have a, have a short sort of a main street or a storefront street extending off of that. Kind of right in the middle of, of the school site, uh, or where the school site used to be. And then it would, a couple of other roads. And what we've done is mixed in some through block connections there. And so what you see on the left and right are two different ways that you could develop it. And one of them is what we're calling an urban town center, which might be more private development that would meet the block frontage standards and integrate some open space. The one on the right is, is more like a civic campus that might include a mixture. You see in the blue, the civic buildings could be things like your library or New City Hall. Um, and then, uh, you see the private mixed use buildings. And even that could still integrate this storefront main street environment, but you might have a big civic commons in the middle. So, uh, I think both of those prove to be, you know, popular ideas. If you can get the organization and funding to do the, the civic con- concept, I, that could be great. But it could be great if you do the other concept as well. So there's a number of ways that you can do it that really meet the goals here is what we're trying to say. Let's go to the next slide. So what we did is we, we did a really quick, uh, 3D model and kind of a mockup showing, uh, so Wax Road is on the bottom in that main street. You can see there with the trees would be where those storefronts are. And you can sort of see the massing of the building. So you could have your five, six, even seven story buildings. And for instance, one of the standards we have on for the storefront streets is to set back maybe the top floors. So it, it feels a little more human scale, uh, on that street. And then you could also kind of see that we're hiding parking. Um, and you've got breaks between some of the buildings to allow either alleys or pedestrian routes between them. Let's go to the next slide. And then this shows, uh, you've, there's been several drawings, but this shows, um, an example of the civic campus, uh, that was done, uh, a few years ago. And so you see an example that shows city hall. Uh, you know, the image on the right shows maybe hotel conference center. Um, and then you might have parking structure off to the side and your, your civic commons, open space in the middle. And so that could be the, um, the intent here. And you can see the Polaris development off in the distance there of the 3D model. Um, let's go to the next slide. So again, just showing the two concepts, let's keep going, Scott. Next one. So just some visuals of examples of this type of thing. So the, the image on the left and the right show your examples of main street, trying to get, um, you know, dining areas that front on this. It kind of make this your hangout spot for town. You know, the example on the rights in Newcastle, a newer development that's still evolving. And the left is super popular Park Lane in Kirkland. Uh, and then lower, you have examples showing these pedestrian corridors that might be in between the residential developments that connect, uh, different streets. And show those through box connection examples. Next slide. Uh, the next slide's more, more of the same thing, but showing sort of the civic, more of the civic spaces. Upper left is, is a project in, in Newcastle, south of Bellevue. Uh, and the one on the right is actually one I had some involvement with in Woodenville, which is under construction right now. And is basically next to, if you've been up to Woodenville, there's some soccer fields there. Um, and, uh, this is behind an old, uh, middle school and the old, old city hall building. Um, and so they're, they're integrating these apartment buildings with these civic spaces. And then of course, lower left again is, uh, Park Lane, Kirkland. And lower right's just another visual of what that Woodenville Commons would look like. So, um, I think that might be, let's go to the next slide. So with that, um, we wanted, well, I wanted to get through this thing. And then, uh, the idea here is to get into a discussion. Uh, and maybe we can, what we can do, Scott, is go back to, uh, Article Two, just to jog memory and, and kind of, uh, article by article. Um, to try to get some comments and discussion and, or answer questions, uh, that you may have on, on the draft. I don't know, Scott, if you wanted to do, it's, we were doing, uh, as far as public comment and some of the housekeeping stuff, if we needed to say anything.
Yeah, I, I see folks are already putting a couple of things in the Q and A. I believe we wanted to, uh, see the Florida Planning Commission first, uh, if I, if I recall our, uh, staff directly, if I misremember that, but I believe we're going to go, um, at, we'll take questions for each article by planning commission. And then we'll open the floor to everyone, uh, after we get through that.
That's correct, Scott.
Okay.
Thanks.
We, we will go ahead and, uh, let, uh, Murray, uh, go ahead and ask his question first, since he happens to be the first person on the list here.
I, uh, don't have any questions at this point.
Kathy. Jennifer.
I have a question, but, um, I don't remember which part it was in. It was about the block furnitures. I forget which section that was. And I, I went to the Q and A, I wasn't able to ask my question. So I apologize for that. I guess my question was, um, you had the maps up with the streets and they were color coded and things. And I guess I sort of have an idea, but I would like to hear your professional reason for how you chose. Yeah, yeah, this stuff or back. Yeah, this stuff, um, how you decided or, or you're making your recommendations for the, the types of block furnitures. Where, on which streets and it's sort of how you came up with that color coded map.
Very good question. So we looked at that as a team and we tried to figure out, the first thing is trying to figure out where, where the storefronts might be. And it, it gets complex because of the current nature of development around here. And, and we, what we ended up deciding are those three different nodes of storefront areas and sort of broken up by areas. You know, part of the, the, uh, on the town center site with the school, that seemed, that's an automatic cause, and you have more control over that. Um, but the other sites, you don't know when they're going to be developed. You know, some of these, the grocery store or even, you know, who knows, Kohl's, um, could last much longer than we think. Um, so we, what we wanted to do was, was distribute them a little bit. So that's why we have one on the Safeway site and another one, uh, or a few around the roundabout there, uh, north of 272nd. Um, so those seem like logical spots to us, but that's where we also included that, uh, the mixed designation in the purple on a lot of those other streets around there to bright, provide that opportunity. You know, if, if they wanted to, um, develop those sites with a sort of a retail street there in the future as, you know, as, as land values increase, probably what's going to happen is they'll, they may end up, some they may fix up and just make modest improvements. And there may be other sites where the buildings may not be worth much. And, and maybe some of the shops are vacant and, uh, they find they can make more money by building mixed use. Um, or maybe, you know, what it might be end up being the future is less retail and more residential, because that's where the demand is. And that's where they can make money. So this, this allows choices. So for instance, the purple streets don't require commercial at all. So those two, those could actually be all residential in some of those areas. But, um, what we've done here is try to be flexible and we've seen other codes mistakenly require too much commercial. And particularly now when things are evolving and it's hard to lease those spaces. What we've done is just accommodate that flexibility, but make sure that the ground floor, if they do apartments, to make sure that that ground floor is active looking. And, uh, creates, it helps create a vibrant streetscape and supports the, the neighborhood. Hope that helps and kind of answers, answered your question. But, you know, we're obviously open to, this is a first draft and, and I would expect some changes. You know, if there's interest in moving around these storefront designations or expanding them or shrinking them, you know, that's, we're all, all ears on that.
Well, I guess I was wondering, I mean, since you're the professional, it sounds like you guys have just kind of done your best with what's there and what you think will work in the future, right?
Correct.
And tried to allow for flexibility. So yeah, I think you've answered my question then. Thank you.
David, did you have any questions?
I have a few. Um, first off, um, I think that you're pretty much developing this based on what you've seen with the Covington Comprehensive Plan. And I'm hoping you're aligned with that. Obviously, uh, you're helping, uh, with the walkability throughout the city. These are notes I took. Sounds to me like you're trying to come up with more affordable housing. Trying to preserve or recapture a sense of place for the city. And, uh, encouraging some revitalization. The question is this, uh, hopefully that's the vision, because the vision is really what you need for form based design to go forward. But aren't you relying on the fact that you're probably going to have to have some investment in the area to make this thing happen? For the purposes of commercial and or, you know, housing or, or whatever, to make this all work? And is, is that something that's taken into the equation to make this happen?
Certainly, certainly. Um, so I think, and one of those examples, for instance, could be the, uh, the town center. If it, if there's public, private partnership really probably would help that in terms of there was, you know, the, the, if, if the public sector takes care of maybe some of the streets and doing parts of the open space, provided they're integrated with the buildings, for instance. I think that's a, a best case scenario, because you make sure that everything's connected. Uh, but sure, you need to, to make it work, you're going to need some of these amenities and civic spaces and streetscape improvements. In some cases, it might need to be, the public sector may need to push things along. Um, I mean, although you are getting a lot of private development happening a, around the different pieces here, but you're right. I think this is, this is just one piece of the whole puzzle. And there's going to have to be some, some, uh, public investment too, to help support it. It's not all going to come from the private sector.
The reason why I bring it up also is the fact that we're dealing with a pandemic right now. And I think that's kind of slowing down some of the development going through the community. So, uh, I, I know real estate right now is go, doing well. Yeah. Um, you know, which is just kind of the counter to what I was going, thinking was going to happen. From a business perspective, I don't necessarily believe that business is coming back full, full ahead right now. So that's going to probably slow the development of this particular initiative for the city. So I just, then, then maybe that's not a question, maybe you're in agreement with what I'm saying there.
Yes, and all that's kind of supportive of our flexible approach of really, really being strategic about where you want ground floor commercial as things evolve. Because, you know, if, if you're looking around the region, you're seeing the suburban environment as property values go up. the suburban environment as property values go up and there's more demand for housing. You know, we're running out of land for single-family subdivisions. So housing is going to come from redeveloping in the region, mostly redeveloping these strip malls and shopping centers into mixed-use environments. So, you know, if you've seen the Juanita Village in Kirkland or even Totem Lake is a crazy example of, basically it looked like Covington. And now it's 10-story buildings and they've done an amazing job of it. And property values are going through the roof now. That's another story. But yeah, I think we need to be flexible, but you still want to create those community spaces. And so that's what we're trying to do, to zoom in and create these. And that's what you saw with the graphics for the town center area. So there's places that you can be proactive. And then some of this is like, you're sort of waiting for the private sector on some elements and you can't do everything. So part of the code is, is let's get it in place. So when the private sector is ready, they have, they know what needs to be done. And, you know, if you don't have that roadmap ready, you might end up with something you don't want, you're stuck with for 50 years. So the timing is great here. You know, your code isn't bad that you have, but it just, you know, there's a number of areas that need fine tuning. And so that's what we're doing. And it's great that you're doing it and we're happy to help.
Thank you. One last question, and it's maybe a suggestion as well. When I went through all the documentation that was submitted to us, I had a difficult time in trying to differentiate between what you would call the downtown zone, which is made up of districts, which are in turn maybe designated as areas, which are maybe designated as space. And as I went through the document, I'm going, okay, now I'm back on a zone. Oh, no, now I'm on a district. And now I'm, you know, I was having a really difficult time for the consistency and clarity of understanding how this was all going to lay out. And I know that's at the very beginning stage of this whole document. But I'd really like us to, if you could, to go through the document and validate that we are being consistent throughout.
Okay, actually, Scott, can you go to, real quick, I can explain. There's three different major hierarchies that would be good to clarify. And so go to Article Two, the zoning map, basically. That good, that nice looking colorful map. So here, you have your zoning map and you have that now. So you've got your town center zone, your GC and your MC zone. So those govern the land uses and your density and dimensional standards. So we're, we're not changing any lines with that, but we're, you know, we're obviously tweaking the standards.
It used to be called districts and that's why I brought that up.
Oh, okay.
They were all districts. That was the GC district, the MHO district, the TC district.
Well, I think that zone and district, those terms are used interchangeably. And I believe in some cases that the code may say zoning district. So, you know, ideally what we do is we just use one term and we stick with it. But the current code kind of uses both. And so we're kind of somewhat stuck with, with some of that. But zoning.
I'm saying it as a suggestion and make it easier for people to understand as we go through this process.
Sure, thank you. We'll, we'll take another look at that too. And see if we can help with that. The second one is that the streetscape maps. In the streetscape, the one through four classifications. So those just govern the design of the right of ways. But they could also extend to the, you know, the streetscape also covers the sidewalks and planning strips. And there's a few cases where, you know, the right of way widths vary, even on the same street. And so in some cases, you know, you might not have enough right of way to do the full sidewalk width, for instance. And so in many cases, you know, in some cases you might need dedication, but in other cases where the right of way is just totally inadequate. But in other cases, we might have pedestrian easements. Like, you know, maybe you needed pedestrian easement for the final three feet of the sidewalk. And you allow the second floor to cantilever over it to get back to the property line, for instance. So, so that's the street types. And then there's the block frontage designations and standards. And that really dictates the front of the development and how you treat the setback, the building orientation in the facade. So those are the three different structures that we've created. And so I think it'll take some getting used to, but it's, it's very similar to a lot of the other codes we've done. And, and folks have gotten used to it. And I think you'll find eventually that it's easier once you get used to it. Hopefully that helps.
It does.
Anything else, David?
No, thank you.
Okay. I don't have anything really, except I want to remind the Planning Commission members that if you do have some specific feedbacks from reviewing the Form-Based Code, you should send those to Ryan and Jenna and so they can forward them on. And then also I want to, I want to point out to everybody that WuNerf is my new word of the week.
I have one more question. Real quick, I noticed, because now that I've been, had more time to look at this block furniture page, I'm wondering why it's 165th and Covington Way? And then it turns into 168 when you go behind Fred Meyer? How come that isn't designated or also 168 over across the street and up around? I noticed that those streets aren't necessarily designated and then block furnitures aren't either. And so I'm wondering why? Is it just because that's already kind of set the way it is?
Yeah, good question. So for block frontages, it reverts to this basic standard here. So it's generally more flexible, because, you know, both Covington Way and 165th are, you know, you can see in the map there on the left, you've got a big stormwater pond. You've got single family, the backs of them across the street. So it really didn't lend itself to either the storefront or the landscape or the mixed, which are more pedestrian oriented, buildings closer to the road or relatively close. So these just screened flexibility. And so they govern, you see the chart on the right on your screen, that sets all the standards. There's still standards, but they're just more flexible. So they're, they're just, you know, the transparency is a little less. You still need weather protection over the entry. So that's why. And then for streetscape, likely because these are very unique streets that don't really fit into the category of the one through four street types. I don't know if I'm missing something there, Scott, that I can't think of right now, why those aren't designated, but that's my, my memory of that part. And I think that they're not shown, they're not designated right now. And we didn't feel like they fit into one of the four types that we have.
Okay, thanks for confirming that.
You're welcome. Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments from the Planning Commissioners?
Jonathan, I wonder if, we jumped right at the very beginning. And I saw the word of the concept of philosophy or introduction. Could we have a brief paragraph that actually would define what a Form-Based Code is and how it differs from a traditional approach? So that somebody doesn't, that's not into planning, picks this up or comes to the site, they don't know what we're talking about.
Good question, good question. I actually kind of skipped over some of that, because I thought the rest of the slides kind of explained what we were doing. But now that you ask, so Form-Based Code, it focuses on, the big thing is it focuses on the form of the development over land uses and, you know, the permitted use list. So that's the whole idea. So, and that's why we look at these block frontages to focus where we want, what we want. You know, we kind of have a vision of making downtown more pedestrian friendly, but we're kind of doing that strategically to where our opportunities are. And so with a Form-Based Code, you can make it as strict, pedestrian-friendly as you want, or you can make it a little more flexible as you want. It kind of depends. So Form-Based, a big important too, is what you see from the street in that form. So it's, you know, where parking lots are located. And so when you have all the forms set up, really the permitted use list become a little bit less important. So that's why what we've tried to do is, well, actually your permitted use list is relatively small compared to, you know, some cities have a permitted use list that goes on for pages and they define uses that you've never heard of. You know, if you have all these standards in place, you don't need to get into all the detail on uses. And you could be a little more permissive, you know? You can say that, well, you could do a light industrial use as long as your facade meets the standards. You know, of course, you don't want toxic uses or maybe you still have to regulate uses, because you might have some uses that, well, storage buildings might be one example where you might, that you're familiar with. So some uses might not have a lot of activity around them. So you might, you know, that's where you allow storage uses in the outer zones, but not in the town center core, for instance, on the street, because you want activity there. So you still need to look at uses a little bit. So hopefully that explains the Form-Based Code. I mean, the, what had happened when zoning came out, it started creating more of a separation of uses. And so they strictly regulated zoning by uses and setbacks. And it sort of got away from form. This is sort of getting back to the old form of trying to create, shape the look and feel of your community. So that's what we're trying to do here.
Bob, can you hear me?
Yes.
So this is Ann. I also just wanted to point out that if you go to our downtown webpage, we actually do have a little bit of a blurb about the history of Form-Based Codes that we provided there. If someone really wants to find out more, that we're trying to get there to some promoting our downtown page, which is covingtonlaw.gov/downtownfuture. So that if you want to explore a little bit more, it's there. Thanks.
Thanks, Ann. Okay, I believe the Planning Commissioners are all done. I do see we have at least one comment from attendees. Ryan?
We had one that just disappeared. But Scott, I'm going to have you control this portion. There's two down there under Q and A, and there's one that keeps coming in and out under the attendees list.
Yeah, joking a couple of screens here, so bear with me.
And I answered some, but they, do you want me to start off with the first one we got? And I'll read it out loud. It was from an anonymous person.
About the high limit, I see that, Ann.
Yeah, okay, so you got that one.
Go back to that slide. So the question here is, we're lowering the maximum building heights in the town center zone and a couple of other zones. Have you considered just setting a floor limit or range instead of numeric height? So I think it's a number of floors instead of, you know, number of feet. Bobby, you want to tackle that?
Sure, sure. You know, we, we've done that in some communities. In some places, we say, we sort of do both and we'll say X feet and no more than X stories. And that's certainly an option. Because, you know, in some cases you might, there's a trend towards taller floor to ceiling heights for different uses, even for residential. But these heights are flexible enough to, given where the market is. But that, it's an option. If there's a good reason to switch, we just, we didn't see a strong need here, given the context and where things are going to switch. So we simply stuck with height. Feet, feet.
Great, thanks. Another question from, I mean, trying to find the core here. They're wondering if we want to plan to allow whatever comes in the term of private developments, which could potentially result in an outcome of two separate city cores. So I think that's in reference to Lake Point and the difference in the two planning efforts and future vision efforts going on there. So how do we plan to bring in unifying themes to enhance the identity of Covington? Given, given the situation with the two different urban, urban centers?
I can take a first stab at that. Well, it's a good question. I know that there's been a lot of discussion about this. And while there could be, you know, nodes again, north of 292nd and more south. And, and I think that's okay. I think as far as different themes in dealing with communities now, really as far as creating a theme, you know, your architecture is going to be a little bit different, depending on who the developers are and what the different uses are. And it's really, it's really hard to force a individual theme on that front. I think where you can create your themes is sort of in the public realm. So in the design of streetscape. So it's in the things like the integrating your nice sidewalks or it's the street trees or it's the lights or the banners and those types of things. And also the public spaces. That's really the biggest chance to create a community's design theme. But where you, you know, where you do have enlightened property owners and developers, you know, what we've tried to do at least is create some good site and building design standards. You know, it's hard to legislate great design. But what you can do is promote the good and prevent the worst stuff. And with this Form-Based Code, make sure we get the certain things right. And that's the frontages and orientation and transparency. And that's why we get into the window standards that Scott talked about, articulation and the different material standards. So I think with that, it helps us create kind of a human scale environment. So that's part of the theme is creating a really a rich and interesting human scale types of developments. And so that's something that we can focus on and try to create a good public realm. I don't know if anyone wants to add on to that. Ann, it looks like you are.
Yeah, I will say that we, there's some discussion of this in our comprehensive plan to about the role of the two being separate and distinct. So I think that has been the vision in the past. But as we said, we want them both to be vibrant, commercial areas with, you know, active uses. But when you start with a blank slate like Oak Point, Lake Point is, it's a, it's a different feel and just ability. So they are, and I appreciate the wanting, you know, you don't want to have Bavarian theme and a, you know, Mediterranean theme. That's not, I mean, the extremes, but I think we are going to have similar things. There are some core standards that they have vested to that will, we are going to continue that affect downtown. But I mean, you also have the same planners implementing this. We have sort of a similar vision. It just comes out. But if you want to, I can, I can paste into that question response too. I encourage you to go look at our Comp Plans Land Use Element that talks about the vision of not leaving either one behind, that they work together to provide some vibrant economic environment and people-oriented places.
All right, thanks. We've had one person that's had their hand up for a while. So I'm going to think they want to ask a verbal question. Gail, you're, you're on. I think you just have to unmute yourself. Okay, Gail, you just need to unmute. Otherwise, we'll go ahead and see if there's any other Q and A here. Question for city staff, is there an update on the SoCo Park Development?
Gosh, I'm looking at our participant list to see if our park planners are here. Gosh, I'm looking at our participant list to see if our park planners are here. They could give that. I know it's in their CIP program, but I, I don't believe that it's currently funded. But we have purchased the property and as we move forward with planning for the property, the city purchased across the street from it, it'll be looked at comprehensively.
I do see George Pearson out there and maybe he knows a little more. I know he knows a lot about what's going on with parks. He's one of our most dedicated parks volunteers.
George, if you know something, feel free. I was looking for Matt. I don't seem on that list. But yeah, George knows something.
Scott, maybe flip to the map too.
Sure. Not sure we have the park labeled on any of these maps, actually.
Well, if anyone's wondering, it's across the street from the former Covington Elementary School, which we're going to try to call the the future town center. Right across the street, I think the city purchased those three parcels there. I think it's just three. We might have purchased more, but that are, we own them now and we'll be planning for them in the future, but I don't believe they have funding right now to do anything more than the purchase of it. But it is on their capital improvement program.
Great, thanks, Ann. I've got a hand from Kevin. Kevin and I, you unmute yourself and go ahead.
Hi, Kevin Thomas. I am with Oak Point and I've seen a lot of interesting things here tonight and I'm, and I think there's lots of opportunities here. The one question that I have has to do with the type two street, east-west street coming off of 277th. Basically, this is a three, three-lane street that goes through a residential development. And I'm just curious about the, the need for that. Quite frankly, it seems like that would be a great opportunity for a pedestrian connection. But, you know, a full width, eighty-six foot right-of-way with center turn lanes just seems, yeah, I don't know what the correct word is, but just trying to understand the necessity for that.
Scott, you want to, can you take your cursor over that? Because I can't quite read the.
Yeah, Kevin, what was the, can you just say the number of the street again?
Yes, 277th Street. It's basically, yeah, go, yeah, right there.
Okay, so that's got the, the three-lane configuration with, I believe it's the on-street parking and the sidewalks. So I think part of that is being, it extends off of the town center core there. And I believe, maybe check me if I'm wrong, I'll have to look at the details, but I'm not sure that the center turn lane, you know, maybe you can phase that out if it's not needed in all cases. That's something I'll have to look up. But that's a good question. Then I'll look at my, I've got my code open up on the side here and I'll try to zoom in.
Bob, this is Jenna. Can you hear me okay? Yes, I hear that back. I'm having trouble with my sound on my computer. Can you hear me now?
Yep, yes.
Okay. I might chime in on answering that, that, you know, that the importance of that street is to build out that grid in our downtown to have that connectivity. We do understand Oak Point's position on that. They are looking at a development there and are interested in not providing that connection. So, but that's more of a project-specific issue or question or comment. But with regard to just the downtown and street system, it is, it's been in the plans for the last, I don't know, you know, five, 10 years since the downtown plan has been in place and it was, the intent was to build out that downtown grid. Thanks.
Yeah.
Oh, go ahead.
I was just saying that looking at the details, at least at that, the median part, it says that the director may determine that a turn lane is not appropriate. So Jenna's right regarding the connectivity, the larger issue, but in looking at the details, there's, so you see these charts, they've got different standards for curb bulbs, bike facilities, trees, roadways, and some of them have certain standards that are very strict and then others have, the director allows kind of leeway depending on the context and traffic volumes.
Is there a page in this presentation that shows the differences between those types? I don't remember seeing that or we must have gone over it really fast.
We don't have all four street sections in the presentation, but it's in, it's in the draft code.
Yeah, we tried to, it was getting pretty complex and we try, we have enough, we had enough slides, so we were carefully trying to figure out which slides we ought to show to kind of hit the, hit the high points without bombarding too much detail. But so those are, there's, again, there's charts and cross-sections in the code in Article Three of all of those different street types. And I'll just mention that type, type one is largely sort of your main street type with storefronts. Whereas type two is sort of the catch-all commercial street with on-street parking and turn, center turn lane, one lane. Type three is, type three is largely wax, wax road setup. And then type four is largely 272nd. Hopefully that helps.
In the, in the upper left of most of this slide, you can see the code reference if you want to. If that helps you find it a little bit faster, three types are addressed in section eighteen, thirty-one, two-twenty. So I don't think I have any other written comments or raised hands.
Well, because if you do have questions, this is a great time to raise your hand and ask.
I'm not asking a question, but they're thinking of their question. I wanted to show people, I've been very much promoting this webpage we have. Can I share? Just so I can show people where they can find the full draft to look at. I'm going to do that really quickly then. Well, what did I just do? I asked myself, okay, let's see if this works. Okay. Let's hope that's the right place. So can people see that? This is, okay. So here is a gentleman that asked earlier about form-based codes. We have a little blurb, but this is our, our page that you could go to and we, this, this right here is how you can get to the draft form-based code amendments. A link there, they're also linked through the planning commission's agendas. You can look at there, but we try to keep things updated on this page and you can see that you can over here, you could sign up for emails. I don't have that many people right now, but please do, you can get updates, but we've gone over overview of everything. Our timeline is in here and as things change, we will update that and add more specific information. And then the history that's gone on here, current zoning, which is not changing, development that's going on now in the downtown area. And what I want, I'm trying to scroll down to show you, here's where you can find what we heard from stakeholders last year and what we provided as an existing conditions report and also in a market analysis is here. And then we have the summary of the open house and survey and the recording of that. And we will be adding this PowerPoint presentation and, which has the PowerPoint and recording on the site early next week at the latest. So I just wanted to show that and hopefully people have thought of some questions to ask. I would encourage people to dig into this. We will be coming back for additional questions and then one of the next opportunities will be as part of the thirty-day comment period for the environmental impact statement and the community meeting. And those can be formal written comments that we will evaluate and address.
Great, thanks, Ann. I do have one little question from Mari about the planned roundabout at the intersection of Wax Road and Covington Way. The question is, will that interfere with train traffic? So let me pull back up the PowerPoint here. So as you can see, that roundabout's down here at the southern corner of downtown. I believe the train tracks are just off the map here on the right. And to my knowledge, trains always have the right-of-way, so it doesn't matter how much vehicle traffic is there. I don't know if staff have any other information about traffic analysis with that project.
I mean, it's a roundabout, there shouldn't be traffic backing up and I don't think that's a regular, but we will be evaluating that for traffic flow and congestion. That's something that we would do. And in theory, it's not a stoplight, so they should be flowing a little bit faster, but we will definitely look at that when we go around, get around to building that in the future. But and also we do have the rail BNSF is one of our agencies that we send out information to as part of our environmental analysis. So they will be given the opportunity to comment as well.
Right. Any other questions? We covered lots here. I'm sure the gears are turning, zoning, building design, streets, public space.
It looks like Sam has raised his hand.
Oh, okay. Let's see if we can unmute Sam.
There, am I unmuted?
Yeah, go ahead, Sam.
Thanks. I do have, have one question. I think I know the answer to it. There are half a, really great presentation. There are about half a dozen items that occurred to me tonight that will offer some, some comments on. There, sometimes you have problems with dark space in the thirteen-foot ceiling or ground floor levels with thirteen-foot ceilings. We'll share some thoughts about ways to minimize that. Also, about being very encouraged about what you're talking about in terms of storefronts in light of market shifts that are going on right now. A third, we'll talk a little bit about fifty-year life cycles of new construction and functional approaches to density regulation that are consistent with what you're talking about. That makes sense. The ability of the form-based code to generate community support for evolving land use. I mean, people, it minimizes people horribleizing concerns and response to fear that's based on difficulty envisioning what the future will look like. And this is so visual-driven that, that there are just so many good things about this in that regard. And then also, there was a question earlier about trends with regard to the ability to attract investment and we want to share some comments with you about why we think that is probably favorable. And then also some, we'll share with, share with you some thoughts about trends regarding the future use of current retail space and how that's kind of a mixed bag, especially for retailers who are not category killers and how that ties into, and how your approach to solution, to storefronts ties into being a solution for that situation. So there's a lot of really good stuff we heard tonight. The question I had, had that I want to ask that I really think I know the answer to is, at the beginning of the presentation, I think it was Bob with markers said, there are some environmental exceptions. And, and I think that the verbiage is really important. And I think I know what the answer to this is, but I think it is probably worth mentioning. It is my understanding that, that the exemptions that we're talking about are exemptions, categorical exemptions to the nineteen seventy, is it two or seventy-four passage of the State Environmental Policy Act, SEPA, which at the time it was passed was the only environmental regulation that we had in the state. And that subsequent to that, we've gotten clearing and grading ordinances, critical areas, seismic ordinances, slope ordinances, stormwater regulations, clean water regulations, clean air regulations, just a whole package, a whole portfolio. And so while there, is it correct that, that while there will be exceptions to environmental review processes as this goes forward, that's because the legislature has recognized that with all this whole, this whole new suite of environmental protections that have, have been developed since the Growth Management Act was adopted in nineteen ninety, we have really a whole bunch more regulations in that, that the SEPA is kind of duplicative and really doesn't produce any significant return on investment. So, so while there will be some exemptions to environmental processes under the limited scope of SEPA, we are not in any way going to sacrifice environmental protections in going forward in this way. Is that a fair statement?
This is Ann Mueller, planner. I, I think that's a great comment, Sam, and you definitely articulated it and we wouldn't want people to misconstrue it anyway. What we didn't focus on here is that in conjunction with this, we are doing a SEPA infill exemption code amendment that will be looked at further in subsequent meetings. And I think you hit it on the nose. There's regulations that cities can now adopt that would allow us to say, we have robust enough regulations and we can, we mitigate through any potential impact through our existing regulations. Or if we, through our SEPA EIS, identify we need to do any tweaks, we'll do it now. But it means that we are looking at being able to exempt certain types of residential or mixed-use developments that are consistent with the city regulations and, and added as an additional exemption. There are already existing exemptions in SEPA for single-family homes, for example. But now we're going to allow in the downtown area, some additional exemptions, which will help the developers out and hopefully housing can be built a little more affordably if they don't have to go through a separate SEPA process that doesn't get us anything that we don't already get through our robust codes. And through that process, we'll be sharing that with the planning commission too. But yes, you are correct and I appreciate you clarifying that.
It's, it's, it, it's like, we have a so, so much better approach right now than we had in nineteen seventy-two. And why don't we use the best approach we've got to protect the environment? And, and that the legislature was able to agree on that. Has been repeatedly willing to agree on that. I think is a, for me, it's a source of, of, of comfort to know that we're not sacrificing environmental protections and taking this step forward.
And some of our downtown area is already covered by critical areas or even our shoreline and those are still going to be there. And we've just in the last, you know, five, six years, actually gone in and done, re-examined those and updated to make them more robust. So we think we're on track. Yes, perfect. Good point. Are there any more questions out there?
I believe we have a comment and Q and A, but it looks like just a comment.
I think. So Ryan, I think you can take it back. I mean, is there anything else in conclusion that Bob and Scott you'd like to say?
I don't think so, other than thank you. It's a lot of content and hopefully you're not too overwhelmed here, but this is just a start. I don't think so, other than thank you. It's a lot of content and hopefully you're not too overwhelmed here, but this is just a start. And, you know, we have a chance to make some refinements here. Got a few good comments. So we'll be working closely with staff after this, and I know that you'll have a chance to go over this and get into more details again. So hopefully this has been, been useful at an introduction to this. I get the sense that it is from the questions that you're all asking, so thank you.
And I'll just summarize again that we'll take this draft now, we're, we're still working on it and we'll be based on comments we heard tonight and just some internal review that we're still doing. We'll be refining it further and then you'll hear from us again for a future opportunity to review it. Most likely, the next one will be as part of the EIS.
All right. I think that pretty much wraps up that portion of the meeting. I'll now turn it back over to Jonathan Ingram to finish out the Planning Commission business for this meeting. Hey, go ahead, go ahead, Bob.
I was just saying goodbye. Thank you.
Well, I see from our agenda that we don't have any old business lists to take care of tonight. I see that everyone's here and we don't have a need for an attendance vote. So this brings us to our second public comment period. The same rules apply as in the first period. If you'd like to add something, please go ahead and raise your hand. I don't see anyone's raised their hand, but once again, this is the time. I will close the public comment period since no one wants, wishes to add anything. Thank you all for attending. Now we have comments and communications from the staff and commissioners and we usually begin with the staff, so let's go ahead and start with Daphne.
I have no comments tonight. Thank you.
Anne, would you like to add anything?
No, I think, I just, not to take what Ryan might have planned to say, but he did send you guys out a notice of availability for the draft supplemental EIS for Lake Point and we will be holding a community meeting, which is a distinct meeting from your meeting. So we're gonna just hold it earlier in the day. We have encouraged you and all the other commissions will be invited as well as the city council so to come in here. What, what we found after several years of analysis and working with Lake Point, so please join us and please, you can go to the website there, too. There's a Lake Point website and the draft EIS is up there, too, if you want to read anything about that.
Ryan? Well, Anne stole some of my thunder, but I really want to thank the Planning Commission for your due diligence in this review process. I know this is a lot of material to review. I know I've heard from a couple of you that you were surprised by just how much material was provided. I'm glad the link worked and everybody was able to look at the material that way. I want to thank all the attendees, the public that showed up and provided great comments. I think I'm going to see if I can get a transcript of what Sam Pace said and use that for future comments in later down the road, but everything's going well. Just so you're aware, the next meeting will be February eighteenth and at that meeting, we will give our final recommendations on the updates to chapter eighteen point four-five of the Covington Municipal Code. We've been working on that for some time. And then we will schedule a public hearing for the first meeting in March, which I think may be the same day as the the Lake Point SCIS meeting, but we'll talk about that in the future. But I want to thank you all and I look forward to working with you on this project and many more. Jenna, did you have anything to add?
I won't reiterate all the great stuff Anne and Ryan just said, but I did want to thank our consultants with Makers and the work that Burke does with Lisa. We've, there's been a lot of work happening over the last couple of months and we appreciate that and it was a great, I felt, informative meeting, so thank you very much, guys.
Okay, let's move on to the Planning Commission members, unless the staff has anything else to add. Let's start with David.
First off, a lot of good information tonight and I appreciate all the efforts that our consultants as well as our staff has done with making this happen. I had a real brief question. Do we have any further status on who we have for the additional member for the Planning Commission?
The city council deferred interviews at the last meeting. They have one more interview to conduct, I believe. And I think they deferred their appointment until after their meeting next week.
Very fine.
They also did receive one more applicant. So they may or may not make a decision next council meeting, so we'll wait and see.
Okay, with that, I just wish everyone to stay happy and safe.
Joe, would you like to go next, please?
Um, nothing else, thank you.
Kathy?
Thank you to the staff and consultants. It was a very informative and well-done presentation and I appreciate all the information.
All right.
I just echo those same comments and thank you for all the effort and the great presentation.
Jennifer?
It's already been said, so I don't have anything to add. I guess happy Valentine's Day, everyone. Ten days away.
That is my birthday, by the way.
Okay.
That must be why we love you.
Happy birthday.
Okay, I would echo what Jennifer said. Sometimes they assume if you haven't started planning, don't get in trouble. Second, if you do have any specific feedbacks on the form-based code, please do go ahead and send them back to Ryan and Jenna and Daphne so they can get them off to Bob and Scott. Also, looking forward to seeing as many folks as possible at the Lake Point meeting on the eighteenth. That is at three-thirty in the afternoon and that's not a public hearing. That is just a community meeting. We do, to my knowledge, have Planning Commission that night. I believe they just confirmed that. We're gonna be back to Treeco. And I would like to see as many people there as possible. Obviously, that's gonna be coming in front of us again later this year. And I believe that MDA was the largest packet we've ever received, which was close to five hundred pages on, as a planning commission, so. Finally, we have a joint meeting, meeting with the city council on the twenty-third to go through, I believe, the work plan for the year. Is that correct, Jenna?
Mute button? That is correct.
Okay, and that is at six PM on the twenty-third, and then we still have our meeting on the eighteenth as well. And finally, to all those attendees who are still out there and stuck through some pretty dry material, it's interesting, but it's dry. You are exactly the kind of people who might be interested in some of the open commit, commit, commission positions for the city. Check the city website. I'm sure that Jenna or Ryan or Daphne or Anne can hook you up with some applications. We do need the citizens to participate. And I finally thank the staff and to Bob and Scott for all their hard work and they always present detailed thorough material. Thank you, everyone. I will, I will close the meeting and wish you all a happy, happy Friday and a happy, happy weekend and stay safe and healthy. Thank you.
Good night.
Thank you. Good night.